Later, so why don't we call the meeting to order, Don, are you ready? Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay, well, first, we have some mail here.
Yeah.
We'll go through the mail, and we have this, Don, he had emailed us this agreement on maintaining roads, which is Wilson Lake Estates and between Russell County and Lincoln County back in 2014, and I'll give a copy, she printed us a copy for us, and we asked last week about, there's four of them here, do you want one, Don?
I gave her one.
I've had one already.
You have.
There's an extra.
Well, there's an extra.
You can give one to.
Remember somebody.
Brendan, Brendan, yeah, okay, Brendan.
I don't know how this works.
I don't either. You've been running that pretty good last few weeks.
I'm not sure.
Hello?
Are you there?
No, sir.
Okay, there we go, thank you.
Morning, Alexis, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
We've called a meeting to order already a few minutes ago, instead of the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going through the mail now, and the first thing I did was, Don emailed us the agreement back in 2014 between Wilson Lake, between Russell County and Lincoln County on how to deal with some of the lake roads. Do you have that copy?
Yes, I think it was 2015, and it basically said it was going to continue unless it was given written notice for cancellation, the way I read it.
Right, I kind of read it that way, too.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want, I can read it here, it's not very big for the.
Sure.
I'll read this agreement back in, it says it was adopted the third day of November 2014, is what my copy says, but anyway, agreement on maintaining roads is the title, it says Russell County, through the Russell County Commissioners agrees, agree to the maintaining of the road, East Shoreline Drive from the Russell County, Lincoln County line to Kansas Highway 232, in return, Lincoln County, through the Lincoln County Commissioners, agree to maintain the access road from Kansas Highway 232 through Wilson Lake Estates. The maintaining of the road shall include the hauling of all necessary road materials, the physical maintenance of the road, the mowing of the shoulders of the roads, and snow removal from the roads. This agreement shall be in effect, we got a typo there, whatever, the agreement shall be in effect for a period of one year, beginning January the first, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2015, and shall be renewed for like annual periods unless either party provides the other with notice of cancellation of the agreement at least thirty days in advance of the December 31th of the lease year then in effect. So I guess we have a ongoing agreement with Russell County to do this now, is that correct? Jim, Alexis?
Yeah, unless we cancel it, and we haven't, so it continues in force.
But I don't think our highway department's been maintaining, or maybe we have once in a while, but we haven't had a scheduled maintenance of Wilson Lake Estates. Is that correct, Alexis, do you know any more about this?
I believe we have been doing the snow removal, I do not know how much material has been placed out there, I'm sure the highway department has that information, but over the last several years, I don't think anything has structurally been done to the paved portion of the road that Russell County took over, so we do need to discuss this, I think, with their commission.
Yeah, I think it would be good, since we've fixed the landslide issue, and we're kind of, we're in debate on what is our responsibility with the roads up there, maybe we should get with Russell County and review all of this stuff again, in my opinion. Jim, do you have any input?
No, it'd just be an information meeting, because this apparently is going to be in effect until December or 2020, if we want to cancel or to change it, because it's in effect now, signed by all the Commissioners in both counties, and both clerks, and stamped and sealed and all that, so unless we change it next first of December, it's in effect.
Yeah, that's fine with me, as long as we are, I would just like to know what we are doing, and what our responsibilities are, and what, this kind of is vague here to me, maintaining the road, East Shoreline Drive, is what Russell County's doing from, I guess it's not too vague, to Kansas Highway 232, in return, we're doing, we're going to maintain the access road from Kansas 232 through Wilson Lake Estates, well, that's quite a big statement there, through Wilson Lake Estates, there are multiple roads through there, and what, you know, so, I don't, you know, I don't care if we talk to them or not, I'd just like to touch base with them, decide what they are doing and what we should do in the full picture of what we're doing here.
It might be of interest to have both county boards and the, both highway department bosses meet out in Wilson County Lake sometime and see what the deal is, make sure we're all in agreement.
Don, this question is for you, did you happen to send that to the highway department as well when you found that agreement?
I don't think I did, but I think he's seen it.
Okay.
And he may have a copy, but we have a copy here for him to give today.
Okay, thank you.
We can review it later and talk to Brendan and see if he could get with the Russell County Highway Department and maybe discuss things, and I agree with Jim, maybe we could, we have to, I think I'd like to, just to go over with Russell Counties, ask them what we're all doing to comply with this, you know, because, you know, when we went through this landslide issue, it was kind of uncertain who was doing what out there, they were even putting down their own materials, they had some of that new crushed rock, you know, and I don't think Lincoln County provided that, so I would just like to, you know, I'd like to get some understanding here in writing, again, maybe define these things better, so that we don't go through what we went through the last year with the issues out there. What do you think, Alexis, any input?
I think we can just task the highway department to set up that meeting, and even if they call into our commission meeting, or like Mr. Gaiman suggested, we could all meet out there to physically look and see what exactly needs done, that would be fine. I agree to any of that.
Yeah, and I do, too, I would just like to, you know, let's get this issue resolved so we know who's responsible for what, so five years from now, we don't go through this again. Anyway, you got any, that's one issue, that's one letter here, Don printed for us, are you ready to move on, Alexis, we'll move on to other mail here.
Sure.
All right, we got a bill from Street Plumbing for forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for Lincoln Park Manor Toilet Dishwasher Booster are leaking. Technician tightened up the stool and also silicone around the base. Dishwasher booster is something that is being rented through another company, and then one will need to be ordered with them. I think I talked to Jonathan about this, and they decided that that, that dishwasher issue was neither, that was there before, I think before even Kristen Robinson, and even before, so I don't think that's an issue for us, that's an issue Mr. Grace, I think, is going to have to deal with, I talked to Jonathan about that. But anyway, we have this bill for forty-eight seventy-five, I'm sorry, I deviated here, for this Lincoln Park Manor Toilet Dishwasher Booster, I don't know if we want, I guess we'll approve of that, any issues, questions on that, Jim or Alexis?
No.
Okay, and then I have a, just a handwritten note here, 12/20/19, 10:50 a.m., Dan Heine called for me to put into time doc, time clock, that he is off today, the twentieth, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, he also said I had some.
Ms. Punches, sorry, that wasn't supposed to get to you, we were going to talk about that during your call.
That's yours? I shouldn't have.
Yes, I had Hannah write a letter, because this is an example of what we're having to do, that we shouldn't have to do for department heads, so we'll discuss that when we discuss HR.
Okay, and here we have a, another bill for Street Plumbing for Lincoln Park Manor, technician adjusted a flapper on one stool and tightened the tank on the other, forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
You know, I'm a little concerned about those things.
How can Jonathan can't do that?
Yeah, I think he should be able to do that, I could do that.
Over the weekend, I rebuilt three toilets in my house from scratch, that's, no, hell no.
Right, I mean, at least clearly explains that they are to have a maintenance staff, and I consider that regular maintenance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I could even do that, so it must be not too difficult, so, I kind of agree with you on that one. Okay.
Okay.
And then we have another, I have a, from the hospital board, another, oh, this is one I didn't get, was it, this last, I forgot to take it, I went to the hospital board meeting Tuesday night, I'll report that now, I got, here's the, there's a handout they give, I forgot to get it, so I went there, but I just listened, and they're still in discussions with, they're going to have a meeting today, actually, at two o'clock, an executive session, and they're talking over, discussing with this one lady about temporary, or being a temporary administrator or CEO, so I, and there was nothing new in the, here, except that their finances are getting lower, cash is lower, they have some concerns about, they pay payroll here in December, they have a few concerns about January, but I'll leave it at that for now, they got a meeting again at two, but I think it's executive session only, so I don't even know if I'll go there, because I don't go into the executive session. So they're ongoing, trying to hire this CEO lady, temporary, then hopefully she can recruit another administrator, that's at least where they were. Any, is she questioning it, Alexis or Jim? And we'll know more after today, and also.
I would like to say, it's very, it is very nice to see them making an effort to increase their communication to our board, as far as letting us know what's happening in a preemptive manner.
Yes, I talked to Mr. Broberg, he's been very cooperative here, and I've talked to him some more over this last week about their position and situation, and they want to work with us, and they know that we've kind of had a concern about them not being, the board not being involved more, and they plan to be involved more on the day-to-day activities, especially contracts and hiring and things like that, so hopefully that is.
Well, when it comes down to the cost of things, they should always know that, they don't, the board isn't necessarily responsible for the operations of what's happening inside of the hospital, as far as the faculty and the patients are concerned, I mean, when it comes down to knowing the cost and the price, they should always be aware.
Right, and I think Mr. Broberg realizes that we had that issue, and he agrees now, I think, somewhat to, definitely now, obviously, they're looking for a new CEO or new administrator, and.
So I, I asked a question last week, and I would like to know, does anyone else in the commission find it disturbing that to date, the board, the hospital board, has still not seen the contracts with the current providers?
Well, I think that is a concern, yeah, but I, I think they have now, Alexis, looking at things, I think.
No, I just.
I think Mr. Broberg is more involved now.
Yeah, I asked him on Monday, remember, and any, any of the board members that were there at the meeting, Mr. Krangle, Mr. Broberg, the president.
Bill Houston.
Mr. Houston, I think there was one other member at least, and I asked specifically, has anyone seen the contracts, and they still had not, as of last Monday.
I think they did since then, though, I talked to Mr. Broberg last Thursday, so.
Okay.
I agree, you were right, I'm not arguing with you, they should have been more involved on the contracts especially, and hiring, and, and they know that they have a lot of expense compared to income, and they hopefully will deal with that. Yeah, Cindy has a question, what?
Randy, they also at the meeting froze all additional hiring and placing.
Right, right, Cindy reminded me that they were, they're freezing all hiring and for the next ninety days, and other major purchases, so.
Well, my concern is, they have dug themselves in such a hole over there, that it's going to be very difficult to get out without some significant expenditure, time, effort, and money, and I'm not sure how we're going to get over this, he said in a meeting that they could make it through December, but he wasn't sure at all how they're going to make it through January until we release the funds on the twentieth, so that could lead us to twenty days of not having any spending money over there, you just can't operate like that.
Yeah, there's a concern.
Actually, I noticed in the minute that, Don noted that dispersment's going to be on the thirty-first of January, is that correct, Don?
Correct, because they don't get it through until you guys approve AP.
Okay, so that, yeah, that.
This time it's the twentieth for some reason, I wonder why. Well, anyway, yes, there's a cash flow issue there, they may be coming to us concerning that, too, before the thirty-first, so we'll have to determine what to do. Anyway, that's one issue, let's, want to move on?
I do have more correspondence, if you're ready.
Well, I have, I think we got something here from Campbell and Johnson, PA, who's, what are they, Don? I think they're.
They were the architects.
Architects, it's a calendar, wait, I'll get this all up here, they gave us a calendar as a present, as a present here, so.
That goes in Alexis's stack.
Yeah, you're getting all this stuff, Alexis, an pile here.
That's fine.
Anyway, that's all I have, that, or that's Don gave us from mail, okay, you have some more correspondence?
Uh, yes, to our commission email from Sean Peterson, 33 Ridge Road, Sylvan Grove, but it says, when will the road crew be back, and I'm sorry, this came in last Monday, but it was after we had adjourned, it was right at the end of our meeting, 2:38 p.m., it says, when will the road crew be back to finish up what they tore up, this is ridiculous, the way it was had been fine, it was flat, grass, able to be mowed, in fact, water never ran down that side of the road, the repairs that were needed to stop the slide caused it to run down the road, now that it's fixed, it should stay on the other side of the road, therefore making this unnecessary, do we not contact property owners to discuss, I could have explained what happened when it rained, and then there was a picture with this message, there's no notation of the actual location, but the picture, it kind of, it looks like what they did was try to restore a ditch alongside the road, and they were, the person who wrote in was saying that it was flat and was grassed in, well, I believe that would be because there was no ditch, so it looks like our road crew tried to reclaim a ditch on that side of the road, I guess we need to pass this along to Mr. McKay, but I just wanted to let you know that came in in our email, and then the other note that we had was just from Don, well, it was correspondence between Jonathan Schale and Don Harlow about the dishwasher, and just saying that we don't own it, and neither does Lincoln Park Manor, they actually didn't even need that particular part, it stopped working, so they get to get rid of the contract with the company, and we don't have to deal with paying for anything, so it worked out.
Right, I talked to Jonathan about that, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was confusing, because they didn't know, I told him to research what the history was, and I guess we found that out, so, okay, anything else, Alexis?
Yes, while we're talking about the nursing home, we did get, I don't think we discussed this before, but we did get a report of expenses, so from January eighteen through just last month, it looks like we're right around thirty-one to thirty-two, somewhere in there, I would say, if I had to do an average.
Yeah, yeah, I think I, that's about where, that's what I heard, too, they're about thirty-one to thirty, they were up to thirty-three, I think, in the summer for a while.
Okay, just as a follow-up, I wanted to make sure we noticed that, because that's the only way that we know what the rent is supposed to be. Have we received any more rent checks from Lincoln Park Manor?
No, I don't believe so, just the one.
That's all the correspondence I had, well, I shouldn't say that, I do have other correspondence that came in to me personally, not to our, our commission email, there's still some concern about the material that was taken out of the Zacco pit, placed on Union, and then also a separate concern, again, from Steve Schneider about Union and Fiftieth, so I really, I kind of just have been asking for some patience, we need some evaporations to happen, which may or may not happen over the winter time, so that's kind of a problem, but there was a lot of material placed on the road from that particular pit, that is just, people are complaining of rock breaks in their tires, and just that the material is sloppy, so we'll bring that up again at the Highway Department section.
Okay, are these street bills, do you, you want to pay for these street bills, or one of them? Remember I had, we had these two street bills, one for forty-eight seventy-five, another for forty-eight seventy-five.
Well, the one fixing toilets, we don't pay for that.
Okay, but the technician, one was also had to fix the toilet, I guess we'll pay for that, huh?
One was for caulking and something else, and the other one was for the flapper, you said?
Yeah, one was technician tightened up the stool, and also silicone around the base, and then, well, the other one was for the flapper.
Well, see, those are things that we should be doing, not we, but your maintenance guy, you don't need to call Street for fifty dollars a piece to do that, you do that on your own, every homeowner I know fixes these on toilets like that, that's, those aren't right.
I agree, we have it in the lease that they're supposed to provide maintenance, that's regular maintenance, that's not anything that's specialized.
So we won't approve these, then, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll give it to Don, I approve, and they, they need to do their own.
With the commission's permission, I will go ahead and send an email to Mr. Schale, I did get his correct email, so I will let him know if he gives me permission to go ahead and do that right now.
Yeah, you got my permission?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have any other correspondence, Alexis?
I do not.
Okay, it's around about ten-thirty, we have Mr. Walter here from the ambulance service on the agenda, so we'll bring you up, Mary.
I have Tim Lachter with me today with American Response Vehicles, you guys were interested in, in what kind of financial terms that we could set up with these guys, I'm going to let.
You were talking, is this the?
That's the remount, Randy.
Oh, the remount, oh, the remount for the, for the truck, or the, yeah, okay, yeah, well, yeah, if you want to discuss what you have.
Sure, one of the, one of the nice things about being represented or essentially owned by a larger company is the ability for in-house financing, I sent Derek a proposal on that, I'll pull it up here real quick. So the, the total price to remount that unit is eighty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, now, you had talked about the potential of having a down payment, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've done is, is we've factored or calculated two proposed terms, a three-year term and a five-year term, and typically, one of the ways that people like to do this is with their payments in arrears, however, you could utilize one of these payments as your down, your down payment, and just slash one of those payments off, so for the three-year term, if annual payments paid in advance, three point seven five percent, payments are thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents, with the five-year term at three point eight percent, same thing, paid in advance, your annual payments are nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. And there, there are other options as well that we could explore, but this is a relatively low cost, we call this an active lease purchase.
So if we would agree to something like this, how long would it be before this unit would be ready?
We're ninety days after confirmation, so basically, once, once Derek and I and the remount facility have come together and said, this is exactly what we want, let's place that order and sign off on it, then we're ninety days out.
That's to start the process.
That's for, for the finished unit.
Oh, finished.
That's finished.
Wow, I thought it was going to take like nine months or a year.
That's what many of them are.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, wasn't that the other company?
That was a hundred and eighty days, oh, two hundred days out, and that was, that was through Osage Ambulances.
But they were quite a bit higher, right?
They were fourteen thousand higher.
Yeah. Well, Alexis, I don't know, I've asked Derek before, he was saying that one unit was needing a new vehicle truck, or a new bottom part of the whole unit, and I just said, he had come to the board and talked to us about it, so I don't, I'm not, he's, so that's what he's doing, he's throwing out some numbers, so.
I wanted to, wanted to get this approached before the end of the year, that way, all this is on the table.
Right.
Before we do anything for the end of the year, and this saves a ton of money over a complete new truck purchase, I mean.
You say the box is good, right?
Oh, my, yeah, there's no problems with that box, Jim.
That's what allowed us to be able to do this at such an effective cost, is that the box is in great shape.
Yeah, we take good care of that box, that's been a good box.
As far as a new ambulance would be concerned, I mean, this is just a little over half the price, so, you know, on a, on a lower end for the same type of ambulance to be manufactured brand-new, you'd be a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and sixty-five.
Last year, I think they spent a hundred and eighty on that truck that's in the shed right now, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So out of curiosity, this would address the second truck, where are we with the third one in any future need, as far as looking at making payments between three or five years, where are we in need with the other, well, I guess we have two more, correct?
Well, one of them's brand-new.
But we have four total?
No, we have three, one's in Sylvan.
Oh, okay.
And then two here.
Two in here, and the, the motor on the one is not good, that's what we would replace, the boxes are good, the one is very good, box and.
It's brand-new.
And truck, right, brand-new, the one's really good, totally, the next, the second one is what we're talking about, is the box is very good, but the truck itself needs repaired or fixed, or, and this is, and then, now the Sylvan one, go ahead.
Yeah, it's going to, what is going to be needing done with the third one, if we commit to making payments to change out, you know, put the box on a new truck, then what will we need to be doing in the near future with that third one?
I hope, I hope, nothing.
Okay.
The truck doesn't run a lot, and it's a four-wheel drive, and, which is what Sylvan needs in, in their hills with, with the roads and things.
Okay.
I, I think that they're okay for a while.
So budgetarily, do you think we need to look at three years or five years?
Could be cheaper, five. Could be cheaper, five on payments, but then.
You say ten thousand if you go three years.
Do you have the budget, uh, your capital outlay to afford any of this?
Well, what do we have, twenty-five thousand rolled over from this year. And I think that that's capital outlay every year, and I hate to completely wipe out my capital outlay on things, because things do happen.
That's what's budgeted though, that may not be what we can transfer, we won't know until the future.
So you're saying you probably are constrained to the five-year, nineteen thousand?
I'm thinking, yeah. Because, you know, deer jump out and things, things do happen.
So what kind of lifespan are we looking at then, when we do this?
Excuse me?
If we transfer the box to a new truck, what kind of lifespan are we looking at then with this new piece of equipment, basically?
What do you think, Tim, ten years?
The life of the chassis, really, um, what'll happen is, is they'll go through the box and, and make sure that everything's just in tip-top shape. You know, with, with the shape it's in, we really haven't gone through to replace anything, we're gonna address electrical system, uh, we're gonna add a fridge, replace the HVAC, just pretty much boilerplate stuff. Um, and, and once that box is remounted to the new chassis, I mean, essentially, it's, it's the life of the chassis that determines that from there. You know, so a hundred and.
So I'm eager.
Yeah, ten years would be.
Absolutely.
Adequate, for sure, yeah.
Okay, so if we commit to five years of payment, that's half of the life?
Yeah, it's, it's not used up in five years by any stretch, that, that's a good question.
And you've talked to how many other companies?
This is two, but we have never got a response out of the others.
Okay. Then the other was almost twice as high, with a two-hundred-day lead time?
Well, it was fourteen thousand higher.
Yeah. It looks to me like it's a settled issue.
Looks to me like you only have fifteen thousand in capital outlay here. If I'm reading that right, maybe enough, but.
I know I'm supposed to keep my mouth shut, but you really don't have adequate information to determine whether or not you can actually do it. You also need to check with your local banks to see if they could offer some kind of financing and keep the money local if you are really serious about financing. And they call it lease purchases, you can't really finance, we can't borrow money, the, the kind of government can't borrow money, so that's why they call them leases.
Yeah, ours is an, is an active lease purchase as well, is what we call it.
So I don't, I don't know if the banks can meet that, but we always try to give them the opportunity.
Definitely, well, I just wanted to bring this forward before the end of the year, and then let the chips fall where, where the numbers are, and so we can look at it.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Anything else you want to throw in, Tim?
Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I did not, I don't have any more, Alexis, do you?
I think we just, to analyze the numbers, look at the budget here for the end of the year, and maybe Derek, if you would come and see if you could put yourself on the agenda here in the next few weeks, in January, and discuss budget, see where we are with what we've been paying out, you know, comparatively to years prior, because we did have a few guessing years there, um, I know Dawn had been working her best to do the budget kind of from her office, and so now you're in charge of that, and this is your first year, so.
Well, I appreciate that.
We need to keep track.
But thank you for getting the bit.
We need to keep track of what you've spent that we don't have those for, so that we kind of know what the maximum we can transfer is. I'll probably call you in the.
Very good.
Twenty-seven of them, to see what we can transfer.
Okay, very good.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks, you appreciate it. But Donna, did you have something?
Yes.
Yeah, she might.
Yeah.
Yes, girls. I appreciate it, Donna.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe we'll get back to it, we'll have to see our budget situation.
Absolutely.
As you know.
Kind of the name of the game.
It is, too.
Thank you very much.
What's that?
I thought a suitcase full of money, you're in the.
Thank you, guys.
We wanted to go into executive session, and I, I think number four, is that we want to talk about ambulance billing and some of the billing that's out there, and a couple of questions, but um, they're more, I think it could be executive session.
Personal confidential on, on billing practices, guys.
Does that work? If you're naming specific patients, then yes. Or not.
Not so much, but confidential billing practices.
I don't have any problems, Alexis, do you?
I mean, to, to qualify for executive session, we need to be discussing something that cannot be disclosed, otherwise, we need to speak in general terms with just, um, numbers. If you don't use names and/or specific procedures that were performed, then I suppose it's still open session.
Or policies, financial policies aren't protected?
Oh, for, um, insurance policy?
Billing.
Yes, it, that is protected, yes.
All right, then, I'll, I'll make a motion then to go into executive session. Uh, for how long, ten minutes, fifteen?
Ten's fine.
For ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing, uh, uh, policies relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporation partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. With the, uh.
Was that number four?
Number four, yeah, I'll pursue it to KSA seventy-five, four-three-one-nine-two, be number four. And I just read what it is, it's again, financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. With the director of EMS, Derek Walter, with Donna Reiner, the, uh, or the, uh, health department director, then the commissioners, and the, uh, county clerk.
For five minutes.
For ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
For ten minutes, to reconvene in the courthouse, uh, commissioner room when concluded.
I second that.
Hey, hang on one second, is the subject? Cause he read the thing, so what is the subject?
Right, I can.
Confidential. Ambulance billing? Policies, policies, okay.
Ambulance billing policy.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't.
That's okay, I, I well got kind of.
Well, I didn't know either. I kind of just let Donna say that one.
What?
What, Alexis?
I would say insure, insurance billing and payments, those would all be covered as far as no one's entitled to know how anyone's getting billed, or how they're paying.
Okay, so ambulance billing, policies, insurance billing and payments.
Yes.
Reconvene.
To reconvene in the county commission, at the courthouse and county commission room, when concluded. And Jim seconded it already. Any more discussion, Alexis?
No.
And we said ten minutes, right?
For ten minutes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Trace executive session.
Don't, don't make a motion until it's gone.
At this point, at this point, I don't think it needs to be executive session, because we're just gonna talk about policy, we kind of know what the executive session material is.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So what we want is Derek to write a policy.
Yeah.
And I think.
Send what we have and see what happens?
Okay.
Send the, the statements we have and see what happens.
And then we'll deal with issue by issue as it comes up, and I don't know, we can put a little note in there saying there may have been a clerical error somewhere, just leave it out and let them.
I put it, I did put a note on the statements that says, um, these are, these, these, some of these may be back from two thousand seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. If you have proof that you have paid any of these, please bring that with you and come and speak to me. Because at this point, everything that we have is in the system, is straightened up, so it should be correct. But I can't guarantee that there might be a little error here or there, so.
You might want to visit the billing company and find out if they have anything to.
We're still, yeah.
All physical, all right? Let's solve your problem.
Then on the waivers, like she was talking about, if you're gonna, if they don't pay, we need to be consistent.
That's why we need a policy.
One way or the other.
Is there a written policy at all, Dawn?
No, but our standard policy was we didn't write off until they were five years old.
Okay, but that's, yeah, there's not a written policy.
Put a policy, you'd be consistent, so.
Okay.
I mean, I can look and double-check, but.
Okay.
Okay, Alexis, can you hear us, or you?
Yes, I, yes, I can hear you, I had to shut off the video, because it was just not clear, so I guess what we're dealing with is how we're going to handle, what, what do we call this, post-billing? The insurance has already been billed, and now we're entering a stage of billing the individual.
Statements to the patients. I guess they're patient statements is what we should call them versus billing.
Insurance is paid or insurance didn't cover.
Yeah.
And anything that wasn't covered or wasn't already collected, so we want to know for how many days, or if there's a, how many years, we're going to continue to send billing statements to people to collect on unpaid portions of their bill, whether or not their insurance or anything else is paid.
Correct.
And in your department, for the health department, it's two years?
Correct.
And have we sent out, basically, we're talking about going back to two thousand seventeen and then to present?
Correct, this is the first round of statements that will go out.
Okay, so I think it's only fair to say that we send them out this time blanket, that way it's the same for everyone? And then if, you know, if we want to make our policy and go from there, you already have them prepared, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We won't send them out probably till the end of the week.
Well, I think because we've had some overlapping in billing issues with, we were doing it in-house, we changed directors of the department, now we have a third-party billing company, so basically, we're saying whatever the third-party billing company wasn't able to collect, we are now in-house sending out that residual money, you know, trying to collect that residual money.
Correct.
Okay. And is the commission content with leaving the formation of the policy up to the current director of the department?
Yes.
Yeah, aye.
And then, and you're willing to take on that responsibility, Mr. Walter?
Sure.
Okay. And how is it working out, billing the EMS from the health department for your hours of doing this?
We submit an invoice at the end of the month for the hours that are spent.
And is that going to continue for the foreseeable future, or do you need to have an end date to that process?
Well, as long, as long as we're continuing to do that, I guess that's a discussion that the commission needs to have. If they want that just to be enfolded into the health department, and let's not do that, or at, at this point in time, I don't think, um, we will be spending too much time on it, if we can do it once a week and stay up to date with the leases, so um, I guess that's another, a commission, that's a conversation for another time, maybe, this month has been the biggest month.
Has that been working okay for both of you guys? Okay?
Okay.
Well, if it's working okay, I, I would say continue it.
Fifty-seven, we probably ought to move on, we're fifteen behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, you're behind.
Okay, all right, any other questions, Alexis, we're gonna move on, we're a little behind here.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Go forth and do good.
Okay, uh.
Ms. Albers?
Judy, Albers. Sorry, we're a little behind, Judy.
This is about getting, uh, you to approve our new members. Where's Alexis?
Uh, she's on remote, she's, uh.
Yeah, but I.
I'll give you more information on your file.
Okay, I have. We had a couple of resignations, you already received one from Bob Lovelace last week. Uh, Nancy Nitsch has given us one, again, uh, due to the health of our husband, she's unable here, and people wanting. For Alexis, I'll read this, during the December meeting of the Lincoln County Council in eighteen, the board chose the following members as suggestions to fill the available positions. We had member, one member reached term limits, one resigned because of health issues, one resigned because of work, we are anxious to continue services to the seniors of Lincoln County. We helped organize our.
I think it's just playback, I did send her a copy of it, so if you don't want to, I think it's interfering.
Okay. We are missing one person from District One. Okay? Um, we're still working to try and find. But I'd like approval today to come, so that we can continue for next month, if these people know they'll be on the board. And then the way the bylaws state, they're supposed to have election of officers in December. Too many people were going off, we tabled that till next month. Here again, we can't have a le- election unless you approve these people coming off.
I have no objection to anybody on the board.
And, uh, we could, did you get a, Alexis, you probably haven't seen this list, have you?
Yes, I can see it.
Oh, Dawn, you said it, oh, I'm sorry, good, uh, do you have any questions or anything, Alexis?
No.
I don't either, um.
But we only have to do the ones that are twenty-twenty-one, right? Cause the ones that are expiring twenty-twenty, we would have done last year.
Well, except we, we got two that have resigned, Bob Lovelace and, uh.
Nancy Nitsch. And, uh, Mark Schneider is going off, and I'm going off.
Okay, well, Phil, got it.
Mark Schneider, due to health reasons, she did not reapply. Me, I've been there too long, I have to stay off for at least one year.
Okay, so, so Kathy Moss is really the only one that doesn't need to be appointed, but everybody else needs to be appointed today.
Yes.
Barbara Beach, Kathy Arnold, Win Knight.
Well, Jean, she has a year left on her term, so.
No, yes, yeah.
You're right.
Okay.
So we're appointing four new people, right?
Yeah, Jean Free still has a year on, um, her term.
Okay, got it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the following people on this list, Barbara Beach, Jody Webke, Kathy Arnold, Win Knight. And note that Jean Freez and Kathy Moss are already on the board and been approved.
I'll second.
Okay, Alexis seconded.
Okay, then we'll bring them back.
Well, we got a list voted on here for, we have a motion and a second by Alexis, Dawn, we may have a motion and a second to approve these individuals, Jim stated. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried, all, none, none against?
We interrupted you.
No, go ahead, Judy.
Next month, whenever the officers and, and whoever we can find this one for District One position, you'll have another copy.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get a copy of this?
Yes.
And Jim, you stated also, two people will be going off.
Yes, I did. I needed them, Jean Freez and Kathy Moss.
Okay. All right, ready to move on to, uh...
Brendan, Brendan McKay, the Highway Department Director. Should have been here 20 minutes ago.
I was during executive session.
Always an excuse.
All right, Brendan, what's going on?
So, well, the road's at Wilson Lake. I spoke with Russell County. They were, they thought that agreement that we had.
Did you, here's a copy, original, too. That's the original, uh, Don, Brendan does that for.
I went, I, they sent me this as well, and it says it's renewed annually, but it's only for a period of one year. There was a misunderstanding there, so they're going to be putting a new one together and getting it out to us.
This says this is automatically renewed every year.
That's what they thought, but it's, it's, shall be renewed annually for periods, but...
Unless...
This was just like how the all the other ones were.
Yeah, but this says unless somebody objects to it in December.
And that's exactly how all of the other agreements.
Shall be renewed.
But they still did it every year.
Okay.
So, in other words, they didn't live up to this agreement. Because like Jim just stated, says shall be renewed for like periods unless either party provides the other with notice of cancellation. Well, nobody provide notice of cancellation, correct? So, uh, so it should have been, it should have been...
You're saying they renewed this every year, then?
This is what, from the ones I found, bearing was exactly the same, but every year they sent a new one out.
Okay.
Okay, but that doesn't obviate the clause that says this is automatically renewed unless you object.
Yeah, and that, that's why...
So in essence, it's still in effect.
Should be, yes.
Yep.
Are you there, Alexis?
Yes, thank you.
Kind of like to do is have a meeting out there, or sometime you and your counterpart, and maybe the six commissioners get together and agree that everybody's in agreement.
Okay.
Do you think that's necessary or not?
I think if we can go out there and actually see the area, it'd be beneficial for their side and our side.
Do you think you could put something together like that?
I can, I can start it for us.
I appreciate it. It'd be good.
Alexis, have you heard what's going on here? You kind of dropped off. We're talking with Brendan about, uh, this... With, about the Wilson Lake Estates, uh, dealing with Russell County and Lincoln County and who was responsible in our, uh, earlier agreement here. And he, where we're at now on it, and Jim requested him, maybe we set up a meeting in the future, kind of just to hash this out again to determine what we're, where we're at, and maybe renew this agreement. It's kind of vague, my opinion. Do you have any questions? You drop off again, Alexis?
Yep.
Wonderful technology, man. Anyway, uh, I agree with, why don't we, and also, let's either agree to renew it every year automatically or do the one-year deal. We need to hash that out.
It, it, they contradict each other.
Right. Well, let's figure out one way together.
This has a term limit, but then it also says it's going to be annually renewed, and then because there used to be one every year, right now.
And then let's determine, like you said, we have that, what, 1.7 miles or something on that plot map that we supposedly maintain.
Yep.
Let's determine, is that what we're really going to do, and then what our responsibilities are, and we get it writing, so we know what we're doing, they know what they're doing, and then we don't have to meet five years again to figure out what we're doing.
Yep.
Okay.
What I recommend is when you show up out there at this meeting, you have one of these ready to sign, written the way you want it, so all six people or eight people can sign it on the, on the spot.
Well, at least we can, and somebody can review at least, so that we don't have this misunderstanding, you know? And I know it's complex because we've had to, like, grow up and it was never clean, what we, what anybody was doing.
And then Sean Peterson, he contacted me at the office last week. I met with him Friday morning. Guess his concerns and issues, yeah, you know, out there. So, on his property before, there never was a ditch. Part of fixing everything is you need to be able to control water out there, so it doesn't keep jumping back and forth all across the roads.
Right.
So we installed a ditch, went through there, replaced the culvert that was plugged, that was an access point for him. His concern was that it never ran water until, unless it was heavy rain or the other ditch got overfull or plugged up. Explained to him that that's why we need to have a ditch there to control water flow, so it does not keep jumping back and forth. He was also concerned with when they have guests over, they just park on the side of the road and pull straight out of the yard. Now they can't because we have established a ditch there. And then, come springtime, I will go out there personally and throw seed to help prevent erosion, because they didn't want to look like hillbillies. And I agree. It's a nice area. We can seed it. I'll personally throw, hand throw seed in that ditch. So it, it doesn't look, it doesn't erode further up from their property. They'd like it sloped more, but in order to do that, we would be going off the right-of-way, which I don't feel comfortable with doing. So we will do what we can to blend it in better, and then we'll seed it with grass seed come springtime.
Okay.
Just the weather kind of got to that.
Is he happy with that?
They said we'll see what it looks like in spring.
Okay.
I guess someone said he sent the letter in to you guys.
Well, he...
Sent it to us.
Yeah, Alexis, Alexis talked to us earlier a while ago about it before you were here.
It sounded like you got it under control.
Yep, I met with him Friday.
Well, we want to prevent, is that where that water drained out and then washed across where we have the landslide now, or is that a different area?
So he owns the property, there's that new house being developed to the north.
Top of the hill up there.
Yes, so he is just to the southwest of there, that A-frame house, farmhouse, style house.
Yeah.
So, just south of where the landslide was, where you can see that, where the water would go back and forth across the roadway, and then go down towards the Boy Scout camp and jump across a couple times out there.
Right.
So when we were cleaning the ditches from the oil, making the ditches and establishing them all the way up to that corner, it was so that way the water doesn't continue to cut back and forth across the road, creating big ruts.
Yeah.
To help control it, so it, it's not, less of an issue in the future. The water's not going to run over and jump back and forth.
Okay. Did you, right where that, did we redo that ditch where that person, where the landslide was, the house right in front of it, went to the east? There was a little ditch that come around a curve there on that road. Did we redo that when we did all this landslide work?
Kenny did that.
Kenny did that, okay.
If I'm not mistaken, right around the bottom side in the corner, when he laid that pipe.
And they're happy with that, because...
I, they haven't sent anything to me if I'm not on that.
Okay. All right.
They, I think they've got other issues when the people hit the phone line in front of their house and hit the water line.
Well, we knew there were utilities there, and they did that, so.
Yep. And then, Stillman Creek. Uh, still waiting to hear back from Mike from Southern Star, if he's been, leave on leave for the holidays, to see about, he was talking with his operations personnel to see if they could sleeve it.
What are you talking about now?
With Stillman Creek, we're going to relocate the road by Stillman Creek.
Oh, Wally, well, Sheldon's fruit thing, yeah.
Yes. So I, I think, believe he's been on vacation, so I haven't heard back from him yet. I plan on leaving another voicemail, and sent an email this afternoon to him on that.
Well, it's holiday time now.
That, that's it. They're on the holiday.
They're already shut down till probably after New Year.
Yep. And then Wally came in, he left, he called in last week, and I left him a voicemail. And then he came into office this morning. He says the commission agreed to give him one day to...
Let me, I'll tell you what the commission was meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, he talked to me about it, and he, uh, what, what he wanted to do is have you move the barriers for just today and send them back tonight, so he can move his hay out of there. And, uh, we agreed, he talked to you already, and we agreed that if he moved the rocks and put them back at the end of today, then he could move his hay across there, and I think that's what he's going to do. He needed to do it before the commission meeting, so I told him, go ahead and do it. You're taking full responsibility for, if you fall on that bridge, it's on you. He's hauling hay and he didn't go to...
Well, a couple months ago, we went through the same thing, and, uh...
Well, this was, he pointed out, this is his one day. We never did it before.
Well, I thought we determined, you was going to make him a temporary road with, where he could drive across his own ground, right?
Yeah, so, but it's, it's wet and sloppy, so he does not want to do that. We couldn't, we didn't finish putting in a second field entrance because of the gas line.
Yeah.
But there is, if he continued around the bend, there is the other entrance where the barn is sitting at. So he could go through his own property. It's just, if he didn't have to drive through his wheat field, I don't think he'd want to drive through his wheat field.
But anyway, that's, he and I had the conversation. I told him, go ahead and do it, because we didn't have time to wait for the commission meeting. If he had to do it today, get his hay, use cow, you better go ahead and do it. But he promised to move the rocks and put them back, so that should be it. And that's his one day. He was promised when we first started this.
Okay.
Well, we have to be consistent, though, in...
Yeah.
In the future about, because we did say no a couple months ago, and we put in temporary road for him, remember, over his land.
Yep, that's why we put that.
And I've, I've seen Wally Jim as much as you are, and want to have him help him out, but, uh, if we're gonna be consistent, we got, either he, they can use it or not. If Wally uses it today, then we might be five more people saying, I want to use it tomorrow.
That's...
And that's a trouble. But we're done with this, I guess, for now. If Wally uses it today, we're done, and, uh...
In the spring, it'll be fixed anyway.
Yep.
Anyway, Alexis, can you hear us, or what? I don't know if she's on or not. But anyway, okay, hopefully nothing happens and that'll be over with.
Yep.
But...
And then...
Something like this in the future, we gotta be consistent.
Yeah, and that's why it surprised me when he called in, so I left him a voicemail, so he could call me and get back to me on it, so we could talk to that, and where the commission had said so. But our laser level, so we use a laser level to set ditches, culverts, to make sure we're not setting too low, too high, it's broken. So, for the style we would need, the first three or four of these are comparable to what we have. And the last two would be if we wanted to seriously make it more, higher accuracy, shoot further distances, but I feel the first three options in here would be comparable to what we would use it for, for the distances we shoot.
How much are those?
Between, for, for what we would need, it would be between $500 and $1,000 to shoot the distances we shoot.
That's, you got a $10,000, do, do what you got.
It was just more or less to show you the pricing between what we would, what we could use versus, like, using a transfer P-odolite to shoot higher accuracy and further distances. So, a transit P-odolite, a basic model is generally around $3,000, a laser level, which, with a receiver, they can shoot up to 1,000 to 2,000 feet, depending upon how it's going to be hit.
A whole lot easier to use.
Yes. You don't have to have someone...
Give them a P-odolite, take them out, and say, shoot this.
Yes. I've, I've used them a lot, so. It's more or less to show you guys the pricing of them.
How much is that?
Between $500 to $1,000 for what we would, the style we would need to shoot our distances with accuracy I feel comfortable with.
For your own, that's for your own, uh, shooting your own...
For shooting our ditches and culverts and things like that.
Like a landscaper would do or something. Not a landscaper, but, uh...
So when we put in a new culvert to make sure we're not setting it too low, and we would hold water there and trap water there and loose flow, or set it too high and backwater it, we use a laser level to shoot.
Like a surveyor would do. Like you're doing your own surveying, right?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
So Alexis, we were talking about, our laser level is broken. They tried charging it up last week, and this weekend it will not power on. The model, it's an Eagle 1,000, which is about 15 years old, based on the model number I got from it. So a replacement one of similar capabilities would be between $500 and $1,000.
Wow.
I mean, you can get a home improvement one, but it wouldn't shoot the distances we would need it to shoot.
Do it like you're going to use it often and for a long time. Don't go cheap.
Yep.
You did say $500?
$500 to $1,000.
What's this for again, I'm saying?
The laser level.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, 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 not $500,000. No, sorry.
Okay.
$500.
Yep.
Not $500,000.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, the last one I worked is a wild teak-toothed P-odolite. You familiar with that one?
Oh, yes, I've used it, too. I was surveying TA at my school. We had one of them. So the back is, the Odlites are total stations that would shoot better accuracy. They're not self-leveling, so... And then, my cell phone number, since we got the cell phone plan for the emergency contact, is 785-420-1175. So if there's an after-hours question or emergency number...
420-1175?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, you know with Eagle, you can help them forward.
Forward, call forwarding to it. Okay.
That was one of the features. I don't know how to use it, but... Might be nice if there's not anybody in the office.
Yep.
Not in the shot. Of course, voicemail is really nice, too.
And then, up on Union and 50th, 45th up there, we're mixing and packing it this week. I looked at it a little bit this weekend when I was out family traveling. I, doesn't matter.
We don't need it.
Okay. Um, there are some, probably some areas we're going to need a little bit of rock, stone material, yes. There's some areas where...
Well, Alexis brought this up earlier before we were here. There was a lot of clay in that original material. It probably may need some rock. I know it's, we've been through this 10 times.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up here. The commission wants us to...
Every week we get this, the call. It's like they're on the road in the county. Anyway, well, go on.
You're not going to do anything till the spring, or you're...
Well, you could probably, it could use, and we could spot a few loads to help prob, problem spots out there, but doing a full overlay, I don't think it needs a full overlay, but I think using the road, a roadstone type material...
Roadstone type rock, yeah.
I, you don't want to use too much because it's a crusher, it's a crush rock, so it is going to be sharp.
Yep.
Tough pieces of it can be sharp, and that was my concern with using just like a roadstone product from the local quarry is it's very angular. And I don't want to start...
Don't really settle into that, buy clay.
And that, that's, if we do too much of that, you'll have a lot of tire cuts, I fear, and that's not something I want.
Well, then they won't have the clay, though.
So, but, I feel we, we could spot...
Then they have to buy branded 10-foot tires.
Yeah. I feel there's areas that could, you, it would be beneficial to spot a few loads in if the commission is all right with us doing that.
Well, like we say, best engineering judgment. You're the engineer.
Well, and you might want to do spots where it's bad, you know, the whole place maybe doesn't need it.
No, 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 that's, I, I, the whole road doesn't need it.
If you evaluate, evaluate where's the worst, even talk to Steve and say where...
Well, the whole thing's bad.
Well, yeah, we all know it isn't. But, uh...
No.
Evaluate where's the worst and fix that.
I do believe that area is going to take some time, as we explained before. I mean, I appreciate you paying attention to it, um, you know, seeing where you can maybe add some material, do some more mixing, et cetera, but, um, I'm afraid, you know, there wasn't suggestion of scraping it all off and starting from scratch, and we don't have the manpower, time, and this is not the time of year to do something like that anyhow.
Well, it isn't that bad either. It isn't that bad. They're exaggerating constantly. I don't know how bad this is.
Well, and that's what I've been trying to just relay the message, that we appreciate some patience with this issue.
Right, it takes, any new gravel, you can put on very good gravel desk we got, and you put that on, and if it gets rained on, it's going to be sloppy for a while before that gets packed down.
That while is not a month. We're talking several years for that thing.
Yeah, it takes time to pack down any good, even good gravel. And then it has to be driven over and packed down.
When it gets moisture, someone, it appears to be, anytime we have moisture, there's purposeful deep ruts cut right in the center of the road.
People drive in and plow it up.
And, so then when it's, where we can work it, all we're doing is putting the light stuff back in those holes and those ruts, so that it doesn't, it's not set up there, so the next bit of moisture we get, it, instead of shedding off the road, as you would design a road to do, it inundates that light material in those ruts and just exacerbates the issue.
Yeah.
And the exception that I take is, if people do that virtually every time when they're shooting themselves in the foot, if they get smart or wouldn't try to be idiots about it, they could help themselves out a whole lot.
Because that, when you lose the crust of your road surface like that, the water gets, goes into the road surface, and you can see the signs of it, because you'll see finger-like cracks along the edges. That means the water's going through the road material and not over the top of it to the ditches.
But what they're doing out there...
So it compounds on itself.
They're driving in the same ruts every time and just making it worse. They need to help themselves a little bit.
It's not NASCAR. We don't have to follow the same rubber line. We can move over. But, okay. Was there anything else the commission had?
Well, I was just, some of these guys called back. I told them before, Bill and Win, Webke, sometimes, if you would address them, there's their numbers. Uh, I know it's winter, but they, they, they need, want some assistance out their direction, please.
Well, I was waiting for Dan's number from you.
Well, there I go. Yeah, I get with Dave Bell, too. I think we could accommodate him over there.
The hole to the bridge, he's...
Well, or decide, maybe talk to him, let, decide what we can do. Well, or decide, maybe talk to him, let, decide what we can do, I don't know what's best to do, you can determine that.
Okay.
But hopefully, we can do something for him, because, and he's a big farmer, and uh, them guys get upset, they're gonna start hauling all their grain to Slade instead of Lincoln, and that isn't good. And it, a lot of them already do that, I know, but. And that, that's one concern he had, please, if you'd look into it.
Yep.
I don't have anything else, Jim?
Nope, you have to go.
Alexis, do you have anything for Brennan?
I will just go ahead and forward the email I got that I read earlier, I'll just forward it to you.
From Sean?
Yeah, Peterson.
From Sean Peterson. Right, Alexis?
Did you already get it?
Uh, he had emailed me, and I met with him this past Friday morning to talk to him about it.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Yep, so basically, we're, this springtime, I will go through and I'll pan through, seed the ditch. So.
Okay, you'll, you'll help in the spring.
Yep.
Then winter, obviously, we can't do that, no.
Not much we can do.
And I, if, and you're not gonna get severe weather, might be snowy, but nothing that's gonna wash something, probably, hopefully not, you never know, but.
No, but it, it was basically, so this will keep our road in good shape.
Yeah, okay.
And then, yep, Dave, I actually, I looked at this with Tanner.
Uh huh.
That we could potentially put a tube in there.
Okay.
But it would be like one of those railcar tubes.
Okay, well.
And it would, it would, it would need a lot of dirt work, because it is such a big drop there.
Okay.
But it doesn't carry the water that would require a bridge, but I know Mr. Bell said he did not want. Would, if we put a tube in there, it would be considered a low-water crossing, a vented one, I know when he was in here a few months back, he said absolutely no to low-water crossing.
Well, he did, I didn't think he said that.
That's what he'd said in the meeting, was no, absolutely no to the low-water crossing, he wants a bridge. So.
Okay, you talked to him again about it, probably.
Yep, will do.
Well, hopefully, we could help to get something there, okay?
Well, he's, we've got a project that we need his signature on.
Right, and he, he owns a lot of land on both sides, so he probably let you use.
Well, a different project that we're trying to replace a culvert.
Right.
It would raise the hundred-year floodwaters by one foot, so we need a flood plain easement signed. We have the agreement from one landowner, the other owner, Mr. Bell, has not signed it yet, I don't believe he will sign it until they can come up with a solution for two fours and Jaguar.
Okay, yeah, well, please discuss that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I recommend a two-minute pause while we wait on Adana to come to the table.
Okay, yeah, uh, Mr. Gableman requests a two-minute recess, Alexis.
Sure.
We're five, five, let's make it five.
Sure.
Those men are quick.
Do the candy ever get opened, dog?
Yeah. Where they lift the room, I'm not sure Jim had any of it.
Yeah, Donna, you ready?
I'm ready.
Alexis, are you there? Yeah.
Yes, I'm here, I'm good.
Okay, uh, we're back, so Adana's here now.
Yes.
And uh, you can.
I'm on a request to go into executive session for non-elected personnel.
Did you hear Alexis?
As a topic? Job duties.
Yeah, we need a subject.
Job duties.
Job duties?
Mm-hmm.
Job duties for a non-elected personnel?
Within the health department?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the recess into executive session for, what, ten minutes?
Ten minutes is fine.
For ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing, what was it again, please?
Job duties.
Job duties for non-elected personnel in the health department. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, two, B. Uh, number one to discuss.
Number one.
Right, number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to reconvene in the uh, commissioner's room and the courthouse when concluded.
Who's to attend?
What?
Who needs to come to it?
Oh, and to, uh, to be with the, uh, Adana Ryder, the uh, health department director, the commission, and the county clerk.
She doesn't, she can take a break.
Oh, okay.
And for how many minutes would you like?
Ten.
For ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Did you second?
I second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to move an executive session for ten minutes. Uh, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Adana. Okay, next up would be Dawn, hello?
And she's got fifty seconds till she's on the chair.
Are you there, Alexis, you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
We dropped on and off quite a bit on the uh, internet, so I wasn't sure if it was phones or.
Yeah, that's, that's why I call, that's why I'm, I'm just on the list.
Okay, all right, fine.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to do minutes before we start that, or?
What was you, what were we gonna do with you?
We're talking about human resources and what you guys want to do.
Oh. I, I don't need any more, what, tie a break time or something like that?
We have minutes?
Oh, we gotta do minutes, yeah.
I have.
I'm sorry, we.
Or if you wanna start and do minutes after, or?
I've read the minutes, and I find them acceptable, I vote, or make a motion to.
I read the minutes, Dawn, there was one, um, I don't have them open and turn me, but there was one little grammatical error, you might wanna check, it was like the second or last paragraph or something, if you read through, but other than that, I didn't see anything.
I make a motion to approve with editorial correction.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Then the motion made to approve the December two thousand sixteen, or December the sixteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes and seconded, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, none opposed. We'll move on, thanks, Dawn, for the minutes, I forgot all about it. Uh, now, we're, anything else we forgot, that I forgot? Dawn, do you?
Um, we just need to discuss what you guys want to do, um, about the human resource position.
Well, I talked to you personally last week, a little, Dawn, about this, and I think we need a person to to uh, do that. I, I don't, I think it's difficult, we've tried this several times earlier this last year, to hire a person, just for the HR job, just to be on their own, to stake, start off, and if you wanna get somebody very experienced or experienced, they're somewhat expensive and probably more budget than we can offer. And that, so I was thinking, and this is my opinion, and you guys can obviously disagree, that we could try to maybe hire someone even full-time, and I know Alexis, maybe you were thinking, if we hired for him someone for Dawn, it'd be part-time, but full-time in Dawn's office, to be trained by Dawn and, and be for the lower budget price, kinda like a trainee, HR trainee to begin with, and helper for Dawn, and then as this person would get more and more experience, could maybe then in a year or one how long, transition to be total full H, the full HR person. Now, that's just my opinion, because I think we would need someone here to help out and to take over these HR responsibilities. We don't have seventy thousand, fifty to seventy thousand to hire some of these qualified, very qualified people off the street. So that's my opinion, so Jim or Alexis, if you can, I'll listen to you guys' opinion here.
Well, I've advocated that we hire someone much like you said, to be an additional set of hands, a clerk in Dawn's office to do whatever she wants, to train her however much she wants. I do not think that person should be called an HR person, I think you can develop her into an HR if you like, but I think we need to hire a full-time helper for Dawn. Take over such things as you can give her payroll after a period of time, whatever else you need to do.
Alexis, do you have info there?
Well, I'm gonna sing the same song that I have been, which is if we're going to have someone who's responsible for employee files, employee complaints, and or commission directives, then that person should not work under another elected official. That being said, Dawn is the most qualified and experienced to do the training, to learn things such as payroll, which would be one of the responsibilities for someone who's doing HR. It might be appropriate to consider a part-time position to be transferred into a full-time position, once they are trained. I don't think it would be appropriate to just start off with a full-time position under Dawn's department. Um, that way, you know, it could be part-time while they're working for Dawn in training, and if they, if they are taking this job knowing that it's transitioning to full-time, at that time, they would become an employee of the commission in their own HR department, and then would no longer be responsible directly to Dawn.
Well, the one issue I have met with part-time is that I don't know if we can get a good qualified person part-time, uh, because it won't pay enough and probably won't have enough benefits.
Well, we just said we're not quali-, we're not hiring qualified person, because the whole point is to have them be trained. We're not spending, we're not expending the money to get someone to come in to tell us how to do it. We're paying less money to train someone in our own system.
Yeah, uh.
I mean, basically, all of our job descriptions say, they expect that the person can be adept within six months. So if we hire part-time for six months, tell them this will transition into full-time after six months, that means you're getting someone who's willing to put in the time, even though it's not full-time, and then once they're trained, at that point in time after six months, they can earn their full-time position with benefits and such, and then their responsibility will shift from being an underling in the clerk's office to their own independent position, that would be the goal.
Why not just hire a full-time, though, Alexis, under Dawn, and then when that person, and then it'd still be under Dawn, and then when that person is trained, do a transition out of Dawn's department into an HR department where we're be responsible to the commissioners.
Because I don't think that we can delegate responsibilities to someone who's working for another elected official. At such time, when that person is fully trained in Dawn's office, when they are able to take on responsibilities that are assigned by our board, then that, then they will need that additional time. Until then, if they're just doing payroll and learning general HR responsibilities with the occasional help of clerk's duties, that's not forty hours.
I don't know, I think Dawn could use a forty-hour full-time person, because we got other departments that have more employees, and look at the work Dawn does for us, and her office does for us, just with Hannah.
I'm not, I'm not trying to negate everything that Dawn does, however, I'm saying that payroll is three to four days at the end of the month, many hours, but three to four days.
Yeah, but, but that HR position is more than payroll, it's all the other issues that Dawn's dealing with.
But they're not going to be, they're not going to be performing that function as a sole individual until they're trained, and they're not gonna be trained for six months.
Yeah, but they have to be there.
So you're basically.
They have to be there and hired and working to get trained, and if you've hired part-time, who are you gonna get come part-time? Uh, they won't pay enough and want enough benefits, you'll be unless you could get, I, maybe you could get somebody, I just don't see how you're gonna get anybody good that we want in there. If you hire full-time and don't pay maybe a younger person, and lesser pay, and with the, with the upfront statement saying you're gonna be working here for Dawn, doing cork work and HR work combined, and then when you get qualified, you can transition to the HR fully on your own, what's wrong with that statement?
I.
Maybe I'm the wrong.
Someone guessed it.
I think I think sometimes I fall on my own sword, because I don't think you guys understand what all gets done behind the scenes, it's not just issuing payroll checks one day a week, that's the easy part, or one day a month, that's the easy part, I'm just gonna be honest with you. It's the day-to-day, like, for example, we're going to have to do the W-two reporting, we're going to, you know, let's just look at a month, and, and this is the payroll side, and you know, if you all know how to do this, well, then, you know, I shouldn't have to be telling you this, but let's just look at the month of January. At the month of January, we've got to do calculations on any employee that's time and a half their wage is over fifty thousand dollars, because we have to report that as, um, additional life insurance on their W-two, so then you have to modify all their W-two pol-, their W-two files. Anybody that had short-term disability throughout the year, you have to modify all of their W-twos to do that. That takes a week in itself, just to make sure you're doing it right, and it takes a week in itself of uninterrupted, nobody bothering me, because if you get interrupted, you forget where you're at, and you make mistakes. So we have W-two reporting, we have longevity reporting, that we have to calculate what everybody owes, or what everybody's gonna get paid, we have to issue that paycheck out. If you guys are doing a pay raise in January, we still have to data enter all of that information. Then we get to our quarterly reports, and we have to do the annual report. The annual report itself, just to get everything balanced, once they got the W-twos done, probably took me about two weeks of time. And, and maybe a proficient person, who that's the only thing they do, wouldn't take that long, but to get everything balanced, it takes a while. Then you still have advertisements that need to be placed for employees or for positions that are open, you have interviews that you need to do. We have a huge thing that I just don't even know where to start with, that we have to start reporting on a national level, our drug test results, so that any employer that takes one of our CDL employers can see what that is. That begins January sixth, and I haven't even had a chance to look into that. I have to trans- transition all of our, our, um, CDL drivers, they're using their social security numbers, we have to transition that into their driver's license, so right now, I'm collecting driver's licenses. I sent that email out to the departments, and I still don't have all the departments back, but I haven't really had time to sit down to figure out whose employees I'm missing and I'm not. Which we just decided it would be better to ask for every employee's driver's license, so then we're getting them updated, because honestly, we don't do that on a regular basis. basis. That's something the employee could be doing, is those minute little things. So in February, we will be finishing, because all of your annual reports have to be in by the end of January now, but then we also have the compliance for the Healthcare Portability Act that we have to make sure we get the notifications. And with the transition of the health insurance companies, I'm not sure the state's doing that reporting for us this year, or if we, if it was part of their last year, so I need to figure that out. But in the month of February, then it kind of slows down just a little bit, and we will basically be doing payroll, but at that time, we're going to try to audit the, we try to audit back the leave time to make sure we didn't mess up somebody's leave time books, and because as you know, everybody loses their leave time if it's over 80 hours, which how you guys have done it has helped us in that standpoint. March, we'll do payroll, we'll get back to, a quarterly report will be due, which will be due in the end, so your March is your end of your quarter, so you'll be doing that in April. But in the meantime, you guys have evaluations. I don't know when you want department heads to start with that, but we've got to get it out. And again, you're still advertising for employees, you're still setting up interviews, you're still doing the day-to-day work, and you continue on. Then if you guys do a payroll, like, so last year, you did a January increase, and then you did a July increase. What you guys don't realize is I have to touch 70 employees' files, not only in the computer, but then in their personnel file as well. And that takes time to do every single employee. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, that's why I kind of suggested maybe it'd be easier if we did based upon their anniversary date, so you're not doing everybody all at once. We will have a nice thing this year, that we don't have an increase in your health insurance premium in July, because otherwise, you had to touch everybody's file to update that dollar amount as well. So then we'll get to the end of the, basically back to the end of the year, and what we're doing this month right now is employee deductions. Like, Brittany came up, and between Brittany and myself on Sunday, we spent, well, not Sunday, Saturday, she spent two and a half hours, and I spent another two and a half hours just getting ready to build the health insurance files, because we had to start from scratch and build brand-new entries. Well, nobody really stops and thinks about the aspect of, we offer two plans, each of those two plans has four tiers. That's eight plans that I had to build into the system. Then you have four different dental plans, so that's 12. Then we offered three different vision plans times four, so that's another 12. I was entering in 24 new deductions, plus then we had HSA and FSA accounts that we had to create. So to make sure that you do everything appropriately and get it, and I don't have a health insurance bill to bill to, so I'm kind of taking what they gave me, and we got all of that data entered, and then Brittany and Brittany, today, we're proofing that to make sure that we are where we're supposed to be at. Now I have employees that are off, that they have employee spouse plans on everything else, but they only have single on certain things, so we need to contact those employees and make sure that's really what they wanted, or was there an error on the, on the health management company? There's just, so those are the types of things that we work with. That's just payroll part of it. That's not the employees coming in the door, and I have this issue or I have this concern that I need help with, or department heads, I have an issue that I don't know how to deal with, and I need your help, or a department head that comes in and says, I have this happening, and I don't know who to call, and so you contact attorney assist because you just want to make sure that you're telling them the right information. And I just, I don't think that you guys realize the right person can make this a 40-hour day, and that's not even making sure that the department heads are doing their evaluations. That's not updating the handbook, that's not creating policies, and I don't know what you guys want from this person. But in my realm, and what I envision, we want them to do everything, and if you guys say, I want a policy, the number-one complaint is that we don't follow a policy consistently. Well, I try, I attempt the best that I can, you know, and I got called evil last week, evil, because I am enforcing your guys' policies.
Which policy?
That one was the non-paid time, because all of the highway department guys would like to not get paid for their two hours of their 10-hour holiday time. So, you know, you guys agreed to let them go back to four 10-hour days, but they only get eight hours of holiday, so how do they get the other two? They have to use their leave time. They don't want to do that, they want to use their unpaid leave time. So we give them 40 hours a week when they have exhausted all of their other benefits, or sorry, 40, 40 hours a year, after they've exhausted all of their benefits. Well, they want to use their two hours, and I said, no. Our policy says you have to exhaust all of your benefits before you kick into that 40 hours of unpaid, of unpaid leave time. And they're upset about that.
Yeah, that's, that's a circumstance of wanting a 10-hour, four-day work week. I mean, that, that, those are some of the things that come with it. You can't, you can't have, yeah, that's, that's not your fault.
It's, it's, it's not being consistent, you know, and then I was told today, or not today, but last week, I was told that they wanted to know why I wasn't letting them, because they had employees that were using unpaid leave time. And I said, I know of one employee in two instances. The first month, I realized it because I'm not, I'm not doing the leave book, I've been having Brittany Hill do that just to help me save time. And she didn't realize that she was supposed to alert me when somebody dropped below 12, because, okay, if employee A has 12 hours of leave time, and that's all that they have, and they, they get their paycheck, they only have 12 hours to use for the following month, if they've exhausted all their benefits. Well, we had an employee that had put in non-paid leave time, whose supervisors had, and our system paid it as leave time, so it reduced his leave time to 11 hours. And he called and he said, well, I should only have this, or I should have this many hours left of unpaid leave that I can use. And Hannah was like, no, she didn't have anything, and come to find out, that's what we did. So in the month of November, because it was crunch time, I forgot to pay attention to that. So I have fixed that. So when it's coded that in the time clock system, and it comes to us, it's not automatically paying them as leave time. So that part of it has been fixed. But I was, was told last week that multiple employees have been able to use their non-paid leave time without exhausting their benefits, and I said, that's not true. And they said, yes, it is, and you were evil because of this, they think that you were evil because of this. And I said, then you need to provide me their names and when they supposedly did that, because I said, I'll fix it. And I said, sure, did they try? Absolutely, they tried. They tried to do it all the time, but we say, no, I'm sorry, and we normally tell their supervisor that they need to let the employee know, and it's a potential that the supervisor never bothered to tell the employee. But those are the types of things. So like, if that occurs, then the person has to research and figure out what, what happened, did we do this, did we make a mistake, how do we fix it? And I told, I told the supervisor that told me that. I said, I'm sorry that your employees think that I'm evil. They need to be reminded that I don't enact the policy, I just enforce the policy. And if they have an issue, they need to take it to the people that enact the policy, which is you guys. And I don't know, are employees saying anything to you guys? Because...
No, I don't hear it, not a word.
No.
Not me.
Well, let's go back to HR. I'd like to propose a motion, if I may. I move we hire an entry-level, full-time person to work for the county commission, sorry, the county clerk to learn any HR duties as determined by the county clerk. The expectation is that after said, after some period of time, to be set by the county clerk in coordination with the BOCC, to become the HR physician and to be an HR director under the BOCC. The county clerk will determine a starting salary and job qualification for the advertisement.
I'll second that.
We have to take a minute while she reads out what I wrote.
Go ahead, Alexis.
Yeah, can we re, can we have the motion read?
Yeah, as soon as she types it in, I'll read it again. Can I work with your pen? Oh, sorry. And I said, I move we hire an entry-level, full-time person to work for the county clerk to learn any HR duties as determined by the county clerk. The expectation is that after some period of time, to be set by the county clerk with coordination with the BOCC, to become the HR physician and to be an HR director under the BOCC. The county clerk will determine a starting salary and qualifications for the advertisement.
Yeah, I seconded that. Alexis, did you hear it all?
I, I did, and I, under the discussion, I'd like to point out a few things.
Go for it.
Okay, number one, if you're basically giving Dawn the reins on this, then she doesn't need a motion from us to do that. If you're, if you are allowing her to do all of that, which I'm not opposed to at this point, I'm just pointing this out, then she needs to be doing that with her own budget, and therefore, you, we've already segregated the HR budget from her. So she needs to be put in authority of the HR budget, because she doesn't have the money in her budget to hire someone. Number one. Number two, if you're giving Dawn all of that above authority as far as determining and everything else, then you're basically giving her the hiring power. And again, that comes back to expending the money, which then you need to move the HR budget into the clerk's budget to do that. So what you're, what I'm hearing you say is, we want to delegate this entire responsibility to Dawn. And if you want to, that's fine, but she needs the money to do it. And right now, we have moved that money out of her office into a separate budget over which we have the authority. So really, the motion should just be that we are putting the HR budget back under the clerk and letting her deal with it. And then, I mean, you're not even putting a time restriction on it, I would like it to see, I would like to see six months or something, you know, she has six months to train this person, and then they will establish their own, their own office. So basically, what we're doing is we're giving Dawn, we're giving another elected official, official authority over the HR budget, because eventually, you're saying you expect the HR to be an independent department.
That's correct. And as far as a period of time, rather than put six months in, which we had mentioned, I said to be set by the county clerk with coordination with us, because it might be that we get somebody that can pick it up in three months, and somebody that might take longer than six. So if the county clerk determines the appropriate time to make that hire an HR, then we can do it at that time in coordination with the commissioners.
So then I, I would propose that, I would propose that we vote this motion down, because really, it's just us telling her what to do instead of delegating the authority. The authority is the money. I think we need a new motion that just says, we authorize the county clerk authority over the HR budget until she trains a person and determines that they can be their own department head. At that time, they will have control of their own budget, which will be directly under the county commission. I think it comes down to money, because, I mean, are you, are you supposed to be part of the interview process, or are you leaving that all up to the clerk's office?
No. What I would do is leave my motion as such, and just add additional saying, transferring the HR money to the county clerk until such time as the HR person can assume the position of HR. Because all the rest of that stuff is in there.
Are you, are you going to, are we going to do as we did before and look at the applications and be part of the interviews, or are you leaving that all to the county clerk?
I'd let the county clerk interview. We're not, we're not going for a department head.
I think what you're really doing, I think what you're really doing is you're saying that you're giving the HR budget over to the authority of the clerk, and then she can do what she wants.
Until such time as that HR position becomes a full-time position under us. That's, that's what we said. After some period of time, to be set by the county clerk with coordination with the Board of County Commissioners, to become the HR physician and to be an HR director to whatever, under the county commissioners. We got that.
So is this person, is this person going to make less money while they're training, and then come into a full-blown salary once they're qualified?
I would expect, yeah. And that depends, again, on how we set up our pay scale. But yeah, we want an entry-level person to come in at entry-level pay until such time as they become fully qualified to be an HR, then we'll have to talk about the HR salary. But yeah, I would not expect that to be the same as an entry-level, no.
We got a question from Cindy. Cindy?
I was hoping after I talked last week, that maybe somebody would do some research on what HR is in, in Kansas, and what counties have HR positions, which they all do. And what I hear you saying is you're doing away with that position and putting more work on the county clerk to train an HR person, which that is a degree that is by itself and stands by itself in every county. You've got to pick up the phone, you can even read, if most of them have it online, of what they require an HR person to do. The other thing that's concerning to me is I said that I thought Dawn needs a full-time clerk that helps with the clerk duties, period. That's already a full-time elected position, and she needs that help in that office so that it runs smoothly for the whole county. The HR position is what does the hiring and the recommendations and all of those things that you guys have not completed, can't agree on what to do on it, and really, I can't see much qualification on even making the decision of what an HR position is at this point in time, because it is, I mean, look it up, and the main, medium salary in Kansas for an HR person is $38,000. I don't know where you're getting this information from, but I really would require you to research before you go out on a limb here. The HR position is a position that could stand freely by itself. Whether you make it half-time or full-time is really at your discretion, but a clerk is needed in the clerk's office.
Yeah, we know, Cindy, we've been through this, we've been through this.
It seems like you haven't been, because you're not learning from your past experience.
We tried interviewing people all this last summer from all different realms.
And you changed the recommendations of what you qualified. At one point in time, there was a minimum of an HR degree, a bachelor's degree, and there's...
Yeah, we can't afford, we can't afford $50,000, $70,000.
Why can't you? The medium salary of people with bachelor's degrees.
Because we don't have the budget.
What county surrounds you?
Because we don't have the budget for it.
You don't have $36,000?
Well, maybe we...
Your budget for that position?
We may eventually, but we're, right now, we're, we've tried to hire off-the-street, reputable HR people if they're wanting more than $38,000. So anyway, but anyway, thank you.
Allow me, allow me to correct some misinformation.
Go ahead.
Not all, not all other counties have an independent HR. In fact, Marion County, which is much larger than ours, still does everything in the clerk's office. That's not a justification for us to leave the responsibility on Dawn's shoulders.
They have a person assigned to just HR in Marion County.
Well, anyway...
Excuse me?
They have a person that's assigned to do just HR and has what their duties are on their website.
Well, anyway, let's get back to the discussion we had here. Jim has a motion on the table, I seconded it. Now, Alexis brought up good points on, should we, about the budget, really, we have an HR budget, and if we're going to use that budget, if we would vote for this motion Jim passed, would, then the budget of HR go into Dawn's office until this person is, that we deem credible to move on on their own as an HR person? But Alexis, you were saying maybe we should vote, vote this motion down, and then maybe just make a motion to have Dawn have the authority with the HR budget, and then hire a person, like Jim stated, and then with that HR budget, use that budget and train a new person, and then when deemed, that this person could go on their own as an HR on their own. Is that what you were saying earlier, Alexis?
I, I guess what I'm saying is, because... I, I guess what I'm saying is, the commission's ultimate responsibility is the money, and we have not addressed the money in this motion. And really, what we're doing is we're transferring authority of the H R budget to the clerk. That's what we're really doing, because if we're not going to be part of the hiring and the interviewing and the cultivating of this position, if that's all left to the clerk, then really, we, we owe nothing more to the process than to delegate the dollar amount that goes along with it. Because if we're not, and that's fine, if, if the board votes that we're not going to be directly responsible for this person until they're trained by someone that we're telling to train them, or whoever, if Dawn's expecting to, to take this on, then we, we don't need to determine anything. We're basically saying everything's up in the air until Dawn gives us the go, then we get a new employee in a new department. So in order for that to happen, she has to have authority over the money, is what I'm saying. We haven't addressed the H R budget money, and that's really our only authority in this particular position.
Okay.
So why don't you amend this motion to move the H R money into the county clerk's account?
Yeah.
Well, it would be under, it's a separate, it's a separate line item, we've already, we've already approved the budget, so it would basically, I think we just need a separate motion. I, I call for a vote.
Okay.
I call for a vote on the motion as it is.
All right, uh, we have a motion made by Jim, and we know what it is, basically to have, uh, we put an application for, for a trainee, basically, H R, to work under Dawn's office, too. And we seconded that, uh, motion, now I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, motion failed. Now we can have another motion that actually does similar saying, that, uh, like I agree with Alexis, that we could have a motion to actually transfer the budget, H R budget to Dawn's county clerk authority. I'd, I would say basically have the same motion to have a, the application for, uh, an H R person that the, under the county clerk would interview and hire, and have the authority.
I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, yeah, you do it Alexis, see, you, I'm more confused here than what you are, so go ahead.
Okay. I move to authorize the Lincoln County clerk authority over the human resources budget to effectively hire, train, and establish an independent human resource office.
That it?
That is it.
Well, I think, don't you want some time in there? How are you going to determine when to?
No.
No, we left it open-ended.
At this point, well, I need a second, and then we'll.
Oh, I'll second that. Okay, so motion's been made, a second to, uh, transfer the H R budget to the county clerk's office, and then county clerk will do what Alexis just said in her motion. Go ahead.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, our authority is over the money. If Dawn is going to be responsible for choosing, and cultivating, and hiring, and deciding when that person is ready, et cetera, et cetera, we really don't need to be a part of that process then. You know, if we're not going to personally be doing these interviews, selecting candidates, giving them our expectations, we're basically saying Dawn's the authority on the situation, she needs the money, you know, she needs to have access to that budget to make it work, let's just hand it over then.
Do we not have an end time, a sunset clause to that?
I mean, no, because it's, I mean, I'm going along with what you're suggesting. If I had my way, we'd be training someone. There's no way that Dawn could spend forty hours a week training. So I don't see how someone's going to be in there forty hours a week training, but that's fine, let her deal with it. If she wants to train them and, and utilize their work for other things in her office while she's busy and can't be directly training, fine.
How are we going to know?
You can't micromanage that.
How are we going to know when it's time to set up a human resources office under the county commissioner and out away from the county clerk?
Well, I think her county clerk will inform us that she thinks this new hire would, is ready to go on their own. I think that'd be a request from us, and when that person, kind of like we had Deborah before, she was doing H R stuff, and then we, then when they get ready to go on their own, I think Dawn can tell us, that, then we could maybe.
Well, this, this is why I, this is why I notated it as an independent department. It, the, the idea is she is, the county clerk now, is responsible for establishing an independent department separate from her, because I don't see the benefit in keeping it in the clerk's office. However, she's going to need to use human resources funding to get that all set up.
Well, and we're using, the clerk's office is doing the H R job now and using H R resources now. We're doing it now, anyway. So we, we might as well give.
Well, she's, she's paying herself, she's paying herself because she's a payroll, so she's paying herself out of, we already made a motion to allow that, remember?
Right.
We had to physically allow her to pay herself out of the H R budget to, to perform that job duty. So now what I'm saying is, give her free rein of the H R budget, and let her establish the H R department, and we pull ourselves out of the process. If we're not doing the interviewing anyhow, what does it matter? We're basically going to be told, "Hey, I've trained this person, she's ready to be in her, he, she's ready to be in the office we set up down the hall, we already established the, the money, the money, and the, the actual funds for H R, so that's all we really need to do at this point." If we're not satisfied with the work performance at a later date, then that needs to be discussed with the board. But until then, we're not going to be part of establishing the department yet.
I agree, that's fine. Anyway, we got a motion and a second to, uh, for the motion that Alexis stated about transfer of the, uh, budget to, of the H R department to Dawn's office, that Dawn would hire a person, and, uh, well, we have a question from the crowd first, okay?
Sorry. Did you guys ask Dawn if she wanted to do this? If she had time to do this?
Well, what do you think, Dawn? Do you not want to do this, or no?
Trying to choose good words.
I think that.
Human resources are not my statutory duty. It scares me a little bit, because Cindy is right. There are people out there that are professionally trained, and I'm going to be training somebody, and I feel like I'm never ever going to be able to get them to the standards in which this board might feel is appropriate. I mean, I can send them to classes, and... I know I need help, and if it's not that you guys want to have an H R person that you hire in, then this is the one that we need to go. Again, it's outside of my statutory duties. Did we do it before in the past? Yes. I'm just, I'd rather us be a team and make that decision on a person together, and make a transition, period, and... Honestly, I don't have the time to train somebody, but maybe if I had another hand in the office, I would have, I, I just.
Well, you need help, you've got to have somebody.
I, I need help.
One way or another, even if we hire.
Even if it's just, we start with payroll, and then we grow.
Yeah, grow, well, that's what my, my intention is, to do that. To have, hire, hire somebody for you, and then it's going to take time, because if we just hire an H R person directly, that's okay, too, but you're still going to have to train them, too, to know what Lincoln County does here. So you can call them whatever you want, H, H R, and have their own department.
I would like to, I would like to interject, I would like to interject. There are many, many professional resources for H R training when it comes to dealing with employees, employment law, et cetera, et cetera. What Dawn has specialty knowledge of is not necessarily what someone learns in college for human resources. What Dawn knows are the intricacies of the Lincoln County system, which is our comp tech system, our time clock, where our files are, what employment history is, what our policies are, what our handbook says. The, the things that are particular to Lincoln County is where Dawn ha, has her wealth of knowledge. You can't hire someone with a PhD who's going to have that information. It's particular to the environment. So I don't care if we bought or paid for the best H R person that we could find, they're still not going to know our own context.
That's true.
That's right, that's what I keep saying. That's what, that's what. So whoever we get's got to be trained.
Dawn, if you're worried.
I'm just.
Dawn, if you're worried about the actual H R function of employee files, employment law, um, you know, Cobra, and et cetera, et cetera, if you're worried about those things, you need to definitely delegate that and say, "Here, these, these are your training requirements. You have to take two classes in the next three months." I think that would be very appropriate. And then it takes the responsibility off of your shoulders. You don't need to teach the H R person employment law. They need to be able to take the classes and get their own certification.
Okay. What, what is, so, if I'm listening to everybody correctly, your end-all goal is to have a separate H R position?
I think so.
That's my goal.
By the time we get this done.
Isn't that what you would like to do?
What, what is it that you want this position to do in the interim besides just payroll? So we have the evaluation process that's coming up. Are you going to weigh that on this person as we're training them right now, or is that something you're going to, to talk to the department heads heavy on and make that their responsibilities, and then as the department heads get through the evaluation process, then this H R person can kind of step in and help learn with it? Does that make sense? Or are you expecting this person to know everything right off the bat? Like, is this person going to be helping do the handbook? Are you going to hold off updating the handbook until this person is hired? Those types of things. I just don't want to set somebody up for failure.
Well, I think a lot of that would be up to you. We'd turn the, the, because you're doing the H R now, you know what needs to be done. So I think you would be the best person to instruct the new hire, whoever that is, who what you should learn, "I need help on this, and I need help on this, and please learn this." I think it's up to you to have to do it. I, I, now, maybe Alexis and Jim know more about H R than I do, but I'm going to tell them what to do, but Dawn, you know what to do. That's why I would, that's why I was wanting under your office to begin with, to learn and teach from. And then once they learn more and more and more, they can be less reliant on you.
Okay, so let's say this, when we have a conflict that occurs, well, let's say, for example, now Brendan never mentioned this, but this will be a good example. So Brendan had mentioned to me that one of the places that he had worked for allowed for a modified work schedule during the weeks in which there was holidays, that they only got eight hours, that they were working ten-hour shifts. So basically, it would be Tuesday and Wednesday would be an hour, they would work an hour extra, so instead of ten hours, they would work eleven. I honestly don't have an issue with that, but that's not a decision for me to make. That, I feel like that's a decision for you guys. Do you guys agree with that, or do you guys agree that it's my decision to make? Where, I just want to kind of feel out what it is that you guys are, are wanting permission over, and what you're not wanting permission over.
In other words, what's an H R decision, and what's a permission?
Yes, like if, if a department head doesn't like my answer, so for example, I said, "No, I'm sorry, but the employees can't use the, the two hours of non-day leave time, they have to use their leave time, there is no other choice." Is the answer still that they will come to you guys and make policy, or do you expect the person to come on behalf and be the person that's asking you guys? What roles are the department heads going to have? What roles is this person going to have? Is this person going to be above the department heads, and have the department heads coming and talking, talking to them, or are we waiting until they're actually a separate entity before that occurs? And I don't know if I even made any sense.
I would like to see that person have regular sessions with the commission, maybe once a month, come in and talk about what they're learning, what their expectations are, because it's also a learning process for the board to have a separate division. I mean, I think you've done this in your department to the best of your abilities for a long time, and it's, it's gotten to the point where it needs some fine tuning, and that's going to have to be someone who takes the initiative to do it themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Alexis on that, too.
I, I guess, I guess, Dawn, maybe I am a little confused. If I heard correctly, I believe it was, um, Sharon Doe asked, did we ask you if you want that responsibility? Because I am, with my motion, suggesting that we basically hand over the finances to you so that you can do as you wish with the hiring and the cultivating of this position. Is that something that you, I, I mean, I feel like you've kind of suggested both things. You know, you said, "Well, I want it, I want it out of my office because I do think it would run more efficiently," which I agree. But there is this transition period where you're, you're doing it now, so how do we get it out of your office onto its own feet?
I, and that's why I feel like I'm very wishy-washy, and I, I know that I am, and that's not fair to you guys either. I struggle because I just want it out of my office. I want the responsibility, I want everybody who's angry to stop being angry at me.
But, but.
I, I worry sometimes that I tell the supervisors the wrong information. I don't sleep at night because I worry whether or not their paychecks are going to hit the bank, because I don't know if I've screwed up the direct deposit. Those are the types of things that I want to get off of my shoulders, because I literally do get up at six A M. to see whether or not my paycheck is in the bank, because if my paycheck's not in the bank, then I know everybody else's is not either. I just, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But I don't want this person to be attacked every time they turn around. I don't want to play the, "I'm your boss, they're not your boss" card. I think we need to come down to some kind of agreement that we can work together as a team, rather than being, you know, angry and territorial and... But I want this person to be successful, and I feel like they're not going to be successful if we don't hire somebody that has had formal training, if that makes sense. And I don't know, I'm going to take a class this semester on employment law, which will hopefully maybe refresh some of the employment law, so that maybe I feel more confident in giving answers. But I know we have a, a ton of resources out there that I think that we could do this, I just, I don't want something else to fail. Thank you.
Well.
And right now, I feel like a failure. I mean, I, I just, I'm doing the best that I can, there is so much more this position can do.
May I ask, do you feel confident in selecting someone and training them? To do, not to do, I, I'm not asking if you can train them in employment law, I'm asking, do you feel confident in selecting someone and training them in comp tech, in our time clock system, in showing them where our employee files are, getting them acclimated to Lincoln County, not to the H R world, to Lincoln County specific?
Yes, yes, to, to our local policies, yes.
Yeah, that's really.
To do quarterly reports.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's unfortunate, because our, our last, we kind of just dismissed our last round of applicants, and really, what we're doing is we're starting from scratch saying, "Hey, we're willing to train you." But we are still looking for someone who's familiar with F M L A, who's familiar with cabers to some extent, or any kind of retirement program, who's familiar with the different, you know, the different types of, um, health benefits that we are hiring. You know, we do want someone with some general knowledge. We cannot just take a, a secretary from the, you know.
I would almost say the person needs to have some kind of payroll experience. It may not need to be.
Right.
Actually doing payroll.
They need to have the general knowledge.
Yes.
Well, that'd be up to you if we, when you interview Dawn, to, as a prerequisite for what you would like, I think. And we could be involved in it, too, when, I think the commissioners, and you could interview them, if, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't think it has to be the war.
Excuse me, but just, I'm going to call for a point of order on our process here. I'm going to withdraw my motion, I move to withdraw my motion. I move to withdraw my motion. So that we can just continue this discussion. I think we're not really ready to either transfer all the responsibility to Dawn or have a cut and dry agreement. I think all four of us, meaning the three commissioners and Dawn, this week should write down what our expectations are on paper. Because I think we could have this conversation for another hour and not really have it all hashed out.
Well, we've had it for a year since I've been a commissioner and hasn't been hashed out. It's a complex issue because, you know, what do you, you know, we've been through this back and forth.
I, and I know that people like think of, oh, well, it's just payroll. It's, it's not, it's broader than that. And you're dealing with people's lives and their personalities and, you know, part of the reason why I haven't said, I'm not doing payroll anymore and I'm just tired and I'm done, is because there are 80 employees who rely on me to get their paycheck in the account so that they can pay their bills. And I, although I want to be hard and callous and say I don't care, at the end of it, I do care. I do care about them. They may not think I do. They may think that I'm evil at times when I have to tell them no on certain aspects. And, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong in that. Maybe I'm wrong in saying in answering those questions, and maybe I should be saying, you need to talk to the commissioners about that. Maybe I've overstepped my boundaries when people ask questions. I, I, I'm not sure. But I would like it to be a team effort if the overall goal is to have this person be out and be independent on their own. And...
Okay, can we come to the agreement between the commission and the clerk that we want HR to be an independent office?
That's a foregone conclusion.
Or, or is that, or is that still in question?
That's never been in question, has it?
Well, yeah, I think it isn't.
Well, I don't know, it has been, I've got confused more. Because sometimes we think it's, we want it to be an independent position, and then other times we say, operating now into the county clerk's office with maybe help, because that's what you've been doing. So I, we go back and forth, so I don't know what the hell I would want or anymore. Cindy's got a question, Cindy.
This was just brought up last week, and, and, and I think it's a very good question to ask. You have a budget person you're paying a lot to do payroll. And how does that all add in? I mean, when I sat here in the meeting, I thought that was gonna be lifting a lot of, of extra time out of the clerk's office, and it really doesn't sound like that turned out to be. So maybe that needs to be reevaluated. I'm not sure. Dawn would know more about, is that, that, what is it, 1,500 a month, 1,200 a month? That you're paying this person to do payroll doesn't really...
Benefit management.
Benefit management.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm not sure that it's...
Not payroll.
It's managing.
Benefits, yeah.
I'm not sure it's a benefit to Dawn.
I think it will be once it gets going.
I, I feel like right now, it's my worst enemy. But it's kind of like, they probably, if they listened to the video and heard me say what I've said, they're probably like, oh my gosh, she's calling me evil out in the public, and she's offended by the highway department calling her that. But... Oh, excuse me, I was supposed to tell which department...
Well, as you said, I thought that when I was here and they decided to do that, it sounded like it was gonna take a lot of responsibility out of the clerk's office, and that would free up your time more. But I'm not sure that that's happened or will it happen now?
It's not happened, and I keep thinking it's going to happen, but then the other parts of me is saying, is it not happening? Because you're a control freak and you're used to doing it, and it's just easier to get it, to do it and get it done. And, but yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been struggling with that because I feel like, I thought when we hired them, I didn't know that I was gonna have to call individuals. And even today, I'm, I'm calling individuals. I called two today because we caught two discrepancies with the health insurance billing that they sent us. So they sent us a spreadsheet with what everybody's selections were and what their share of the premium is supposed to be. I didn't know what our share of the premium was supposed to be, so I kinda had to figure that out, figure out which spreadsheet was the last spreadsheet that was the current price. I, I don't know that, I've not seen anything from the companies that have firm figures as to what it is. You know, she had you sign something, but she didn't give me a copy of it. And I thought it was in my packet, but it was not in my packet. And I don't, I still don't even have signed contracts back. And I should have signed contracts that say what the premium is gonna be. And so those are the things, but it's like, and I've emailed her. I emailed her last Thursday, last Friday, no replies. Emailed her again today, and when I get done with you guys, I'm gonna actually pick up the phone. But I thought, well, while I'm here with you guys, if she can get to my emails, you know, that might be the quicker route.
You asked her directly too, when you were interviewing for certain people. I'm not interviewing, but looking at different bids or whatever. Would she be, or would the company be sitting down individually with each person? That didn't seem to happen.
It did not happen. I, I don't, did you go to the open enrollment meeting?
No, but she, in the interview process, when we selected, picked, she did say that she would interview personally every person.
That's right.
Every year.
Okay. And what did you guys have happen at that benefit enrollment?
Well, I talked to people to help me fill out mine. Uh, when I was there, you were there. And I, I just asked them what I needed to do. I, you know, I'm pretty straightforward, went through the simple...
You're a straightforward person.
Yeah.
Some of them are not.
A lot of people aren't, yeah, with families. And if you do HSA, and I know it's more complicated.
But, but this is what they did. They stood up and they gave a presentation, and then they said, here, or they had already given you your form that was pre-filled out. So what does a lot of people do when you do that? They start filling out the form.
Right.
Well, then, as they were walking through the form, they really didn't walk through the form and say, this is what we want you to do if you select. After they gave their presentations, they were like, okay, uh, complete your form and sign it. Well, on the front side of the form, there was, I want a, the health insurance, and I want family, single, employee child, uh, employee spouse. Dental, I want the four options. Vision, they had the, the three options and the three levels selected, okay? So you, the employees marked that. Then they got to the backside, and on the backside, it lists your dependent information, and then it has the same thing, health insurance, vision. So, so some of them didn't even fill out the backside of it. So what they called me about is like they selected family on the front, but they didn't select anything on the backside. And I was like, I didn't even think about that. I didn't even look at that. I mean, it was kind of redundant. And that form was a form that I would say it was a generic form that is used for, to do all of the enrollment, and wasn't actually what the Blue Cross Blue Shield enrollment form was in each individual standpoint. So I can see where the confusion, so like, today's confusion part of it was, we have employee A, which we would have never, ever caught had I not put a filter on their spreadsheet and told, told my daughter, filter it by this, and then see if they match up. But we had an employee who is an employee spouse that enrolled in the health insurance, the dental, and the vision, supposedly for employee spouse, but does not have employee spouse on the dental. It only has employee. So now I need to see, and I looked at his form, it's correct. So now they need to see if they can still get the spouse enrolled. It's pass open enrollment.
Anyway, let's go back to Alexis asked about this HR position, whether we wanna have a full-time position, right Alexis? You still there?
Yeah, I'm here, and I think, I'm gonna re-suggest that each of the three commissioners and Dawn put down, you know, we are allowed to email or whatever, put down your thoughts on how it's to be separated or what the expectations are. We can rediscover it, you know, at, at the next meet. Nothing's gonna happen between now and then. I'm sure Dawn is frantically working on the end-of-year stuff. We're gonna have W2s and everything else. I know she's trying to process quarterly reports, et cetera. Um, so even, so really, hiring someone in the next few weeks isn't even an option anyhow. There's not gonna be that kind of time. So maybe we really need to get it on paper, what the expectations are, what some timeframes are, and how much overlap there is between the commissioners and the county clerk as far as oversight of this position.
Yeah, sounds fine to me. Jimmy, you have any input?
No, I'm pretty right, I wrote the note down to do this.
Cause you rescinded your, uh, motion, didn't you Alexis? So we'll just...
Yes.
For today, we'll...
I just wanted to leave it off the table.
So for today, we won't decide anything. Like you said, we should come with our opinion on what we think we need again for the HR position, if we need an HR position or whatever.
I think what should happen is each individual commissioner should only email Dawn. So don't, don't email one another, but write down your thoughts and your expectations for the HR position. Send it to Dawn. Dawn can absorb what the three of us are saying and come up with her own reaction to that, and then she can present it to all three of us. Is that okay with you, Dawn?
Yes.
I think that's the only way to really start getting it on paper because we all have a slightly different idea of how this is going to work, and we're basically invent, you know...
Well, it's complex to, you know, there are different options, what you could do. We've been through this. And I don't know if one's better than the other or whatever.
Well, can I just throw out there? I was gonna tell you guys, if you guys didn't make a decision by January 15th, I was gonna advertise. So can we make that our ultimate goal? Is that we will advertise something by January 15th? We will come up with a, a job description, what our intentions are and everything, and we will put the ad in on January 15th. And my thought was, was advertise through the rest of January with the intentions of hopefully hiring somebody by February 1st or shortly after.
I like that, but Madam Chairman, I'd like another point of order.
Okay.
Instead of withdrawing your motion, I move we table your motion. That will require us at the next meeting to take that, uh, take action on that.
Okay, is that called table or to spend?
Table, table it.
Okay.
And that requires you to address that action at the very next meeting.
So do we need to vote on the motion to table?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have a motion to table the, the previous motion that Alexis made. All in favor, say aye.
Got it seconded first.
Well, that agree?
I'll second it.
You're second.
Then I'll vote aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim said aye. Well, she carried. No oppose. So we will table that, as you stated.
Yeah, and then we have to address that at the next meeting according to the Robert rules of order and the other thing we do.
And Dawn still wanted to know if we could have some type of...
Well, I think we agree to that, and because we've tabled this, that gives us the authority to go ahead and do that.
You agree that we should have some type of ad by the 15th of January, Alexis?
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah, I agree, Dawn, I'm going. So some type of ad, maybe we'll determine that at the next meeting, what, what best we pursue.
See, that's what we table and enforce the issue.
All right. Any other, uh, well, we're done with the agenda, I guess. Uh, any other business, Dawn, or Alexis, or Jim?
I really maybe need to, um... I really need an executive session, but I really don't know if it's executive session. So, um, I would like the opportunity to talk about the issues with the time clock system, department heads, roles and responsibilities, and just particular things that I am seeing on the time clock system that I feel like we need to...
I think if it pertains, if it pertains to any one particular employee, it's definitely executive session.
I feel like it without, it's too hard to explain, to generalize. Without the...
Yeah, if, if there's a specific example, then I, it definitely needs to be executive session.
And then I still would like to discuss again the Sylvan Ambulance, volunteers and the pay and the solution, or where the status of that is.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about that first because that's not executive session. That has to do with paying them.
Well, Alexis, did...
How do we resolve?
Did you contact Derek after last week? He supposedly has...
I did not, I did not get a chance to talk to him.
Okay.
So I apologize, that is my fault.
Well, you were out of town, I know it's... Well, Alexis, who's remember, last meeting was gonna talk to Derek about, he probably has records or time, maybe he has time records.
We, I, and I will, he needs to tell them to collect or, or delegate to someone to collect their hours so that Dawn doesn't have to collect the information and calculate the pay. She can just get the hours received and calculate the pay.
You want me to, you want me to contact him on that since? I know you're busy now out of town, Alexis, I can do that.
I'm gonna be a little on the cynical side here. But when have I ever held my tongue, right? What if we would just pay them a flat rate and be done with it? Now, I'm sure that would make the director's life wonderful, and he would say, that's cool, cool, cool. And that would just take care of it. But I just don't feel like it's gonna get resolved by Thursday when I need it.
Are you there? She dropped off, I guess.
Why don't you call Derek and tell him that we've got to have it set up on Thursday morning, or they're not gonna get paid.
Right, well, I'll ask him, yeah.
And she's, she got to do it Thursday, and if we don't have the information, we can't pay. And it's, if they want us to pay them, they gotta give us some help. That's easy enough.
I thought maybe it died, but it's not dead.
I get kinda discouraged, people bitching all the time about something they shouldn't have done.
Incompetence. World's fallen, huh?
Like, a failure on your part does not constitute an emergency on mine.
That was, that was a Air Force.
That's right.
I saw that military all the time, yeah.
Are you there?
I'm sorry, I accidentally hit the button on my phone, so I don't know. Um, yes, I'm here. And if, if, if that's okay, I will continue to just do what I was supposed to do, which is tell Derek that he needs to just turn in hours to you, that you don't need to figure out who works what shift. You'll just figure out their pay.
Okay.
But we need those hours by Thursday morning to get her to report in.
I am, I will, I am writing to him right now.
Okay. Do we wanna go executive session then for this other issue? Alexis, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, enter into executive session for how long, Dawn?
Maybe 15, just...
For 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing what? Can you help me here?
Um, time clock supervisor and employee...
Usage.
Usage, yeah.
Okay. For the purpose of time clock supervisor employee usage, uh, activities. Pursuant to KSA 7543192B, uh... That'd be number one, non-elected personnel. Discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with involvement with the commission and the county clerk to reconvene in the commissioner room of the courthouse when concluded.
Can I run and get something really quick that I forgot to grab?
And, uh, we will recess for several minutes while the clerk goes to the office to retrieve the information.
Who seconded that, sorry?
Don't hurry.
I seconded.
I, did we, did we vote?
No.
No, but Dawn, Dawn wants to run to the office to get some information.
I vote aye.
Okay, okay.
Before we vote, because then we'd have to close the door and get her back in. Not necessarily. Was everyone ready for Christmas? You got all my, what you can buy me for presents, Cindy, huh?
Cat food.
Well, there you go. I need some of that, we have too many cats.
That, uh, special flavor scent of a cat litter didn't really live up to its expectations.
Oh, no.
Better check with Sylvia. We have six cats in the house and you can never smell them.
She has a lot of deodorizer or something, huh?
No, she got a special cat litter that she gets at, uh, tractor supply.
Alexis, are you coming back then later on next week?
That's my plan. We actually, um, we have the funeral services on Saturday, so I extended my stay because that happened that way.
Yeah. We've been having nice weather here. It's about sixty today, so supposed to be, so it's been pretty nice.
What time is the meeting next week?
Well, we have an evening meeting next week, right?
On the thirtieth at seven thirty in the evening.
Seven, seven thirty?
I believe so. It's in the book.
It's on seven.
Seven thirty is what I.
Uh, Derek is, Derek is currently telling me that he has the hours already, so hopefully he can get those to Dawn.
Okay. Dawn's not here again, she's, went to her office. She'll be back.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm talking to him now, so hopefully he'll get those in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Dawn's back. Alexis just talked to Derek, Dawn, that he has those hours and will get them into you.
Awesome.
Today, I hope.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 I did already.
Jim did already. Motion carried, not opposed, yeah.
Send it out. Send it out and have every department head sign it and return it. Then there are no excuses for not understanding how the time clock policy and procedure works.
And if we, and if they don't follow that, we're gonna have disciplinary action.
So next Monday's meeting is an evening meeting, of course.
Seven thirty?
Yes, and I'm assuming should, I haven't really talked to Brendan, should I tell him that he's not required to come? Do you want him to come? The two things I have already got scheduled is that road vacation hearing and the amended budget hearing. But other than that, I didn't have anything. But that's, besides payroll and accounts payable.
It's a short week and let's not do any more than that, pick them up in January.
Okay, and do you want me to put an ad in the paper or have we said it enough to people that, and mentioned it enough in the minutes or do I need, do you want me to put an ad in the paper?
For the third.
For the thirtieth evening meeting? I, cause I think I can still get it in.
Yeah, you call her, she'll put it in yet.
I don't know if we need Brendan here, if he has, if he, if he has issues, he could call, he can email us. And if, if he has, was emergency, he could come in that evening.
It's a short week, let's just do what we gotta do.
And also on this meeting, evening meeting is kind of gonna be like a forum thing, which I'm not against necessarily, but we should state that when we have our meeting, that's gonna be orderly between the commissioners and then maybe later when we're done, we'll have question and answer period for the people from the crowd and maybe put a time limit on how long someone can speak.
Yeah, we can do, yeah, yeah, we, we can do that.
Because last time.
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Um, it starts at seven.
It does start at seven?
Well, that's what I put.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Then seven.
But, but seven thirty would be the, um, road vacation hearing in seven forty-five amended budget or you might have those backwards.
Well, well, either way, it doesn't matter, but seven is seven, I was, okay.
Well, we can just, we can just open it up to public discussion, but we'll limit each speaker to maybe like two and a half minutes or something and, and the commission can respond and then go on to the next, you know, they can.
Yeah.
Wait in line or.
Because the last time we had one, it gets a little out of control, free for all thing and that's not good.
Well, people kind of wanna start having a discussion amongst themselves, but it defeats the purpose of making the commission respond to each question, so.
That's why we give the chairman a gap.
Throw it out at somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, you have anything else for today, anyone?
I do, one more thing. I just want you to be thinking about what you wanna do. We have, we're going to do a reord, a restructuring of the board for the new year, for twenty twenty. So if either one of you wants to be chair, um, do some thinking about that and we can discuss that. I just, I don't want it to come up as a last minute discussion on January, whatever that date will be, sixth or whatever.
Yeah, whatever. I don't care.
We have the thirtieth and then, yes, the January sixth would be our first meeting of the new year where we do a reorganization of the board. So put some thought into that if either one of you wants to put yourselves forward to the chair position, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Dawn?
No.
Yeah?
Nope.
Okay, well.
Oh.
Go ahead.
May, maybe let me, since you guys are both new, on the last working day of the month, I will also have all of the resolutions to transfer funds. The ones that you will have, you know, choices at is the road and bridge fund as to where you want. Um, I'll kind of go over with Brendan where maybe he would like to propose, but ultimately that's your guys' decision. So those resolutions, I'll plug in the dollar amount that I think probably, just knowing the things that I know, and then we can discuss, but, um, we'll do, normally we do from the Health Department to Capital Outlay Fund, we do, uh, the Highway Department to those two to three options.
Ridge one.
Special funds, yes. And then we do County General if we can to, uh, Capital Improvement Fund to help pay offset some of the expenses that are in that plan. Um, and the one thing I kind of didn't think, and I will make sure I tell Brendan, but I, you know, he said something about transferring to Special Bridge and I said, oh, you can't. Now, those monies that are sitting in that Special County Road Improvement Fund, that big money, the bridge money that we are exchanging for, you can use tho, that money to pay for those bridge projects. You just can't, so we're, cause we're doing our fund exchange. It used to be what was called a five-year bridge plan and, and you would apply for bridge projects and it would go to the state and the state handled all the money. Now they're giving you like eighty cents on the dollar or whatever it is to get it. We used the chip seal project or the patching to get our money, our share of the money, but that money is actually supposed to be for bridges, but it doesn't have to be used for anything. But just so you guys kind of have that idea and I'll make sure Brendan knows that, cause I, I feel like I misstated last.
What day is payroll, thirty-first?
Payroll is actually issued on the thirty-first, but you guys will approve on the thirtieth.
Thirtieth, we're gonna, we'll do the accounts payable and everything on the thirtieth, okay. That evening?
That evening. So I originally thought seven to seven thirty, you guys would do your approved minutes, do that, do the, the resolutions if you want to.
And payroll.
Yeah, then we would do that road vacation hearing, the public, uh, the amended budget and then, and probably we shouldn't do the amended budget, or we shouldn't do the resolutions till after you approve the amended budgets, um, cause if you wouldn't approve that, we might not have the money to do the resolutions, but, and then at that point in time, public comment, but unless you wanna do public comment from seven to seven thirty.
Uh, we should do that at the end.
Let's have you put, let's have you put payroll and accounts table before public comment.[1771.03]